Good evening everyone and welcome to council for this meeting. To open proceedings, I'd like to invite Reverend Stephen Cowley from St Mark's Anglican Chapel in Delray to open the floor.
Thank you. That is great. God of all creation, we thank you for our community and for all who serve it, for those who work in parks and on the roads, for those who plan, for those who govern, for those who elect. We thank you for our community. We pray especially for those who are hungry or unemployed, or ill, or who live in violence. As this meeting begins, give each member of council clarity of mind, compassion, integrity, and thoughtful words. In Jesus' name, amen.
Before proceeding, just like to acknowledge Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land we're meeting tonight, and pay respects to elders past and present. And remind everyone that tonight's proceedings are being recorded audio visually and will be available on the council website later in the week. I declare the meeting open and note apology from Alderman Chong and our influence for the citizens of Mack. Item two, confirmation minutes for sixth of February as circular, you take the reading of the report, second of all, you say. All those in favor? Carry on. Item three, just like to report that general manager and I met with the mayors of Hobart, fish, the general manager from Monoki, and the mayor of Canberra, and the general manager of Canberra this morning with the Minister for Local Government. He just wanted to let us know that he'd received the report into the Greater Hobart Study and would, does intend to release it later this week. So that was that made. Item four, the council notes the workshops conducted on the fourteenth and twentieth February and the agenda brief on the twenty-fourth of February. Thanks Alderman, thirdly, second of Alderman, Von Berto. All those in favor? Carry on. Item five, declarations of interests, or of interest of Alderman or places there, Alderman Pierce, and Mayor O'Leary, if we can, point seven, point two. Out of an abundance of caution, I'd like to declare any interest in item point three, point two. Item six, tabing of petitions, there's none in the agenda. None, sir. And none from the board. I'll take it. Thank you. Item seven is public question time. There are no matters on notice. Are there any questions for members of the public without notice? There being none, thank you. Item eight is deputations by members of the public. General Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one deputation this evening, Mr. Nick Mooney, from two Torrens Street, which is to address council in relation to the Torrens Street medal listed on the agenda session.
Thank you. Mr. Mooney, I must advise that under our regulations, I can only offer me three minutes. There'll be a tone at two and a half minutes to give you a chance to wonder.
Thank you. Good evening. Context to some of my comments will be, my father was a mayor for twenty-three years and president of the Australian Local Government Association for some years. So I grew up in an atmosphere of councils, wrestling, unpopular decisions. So I have some familiarity with what can happen. And what often happens is minimum consultation, absolute minimum consultation with the view to take the complete. So by the time people find out about a potentially unpopular issue, it's kind of too late to do much. And this is what appears to have happened with Torrens Street. To find out that there was a plan, a well advanced plan to join the cul-de-sacs in Torrens Street once had to actually protest or challenge a subdivision proposal. There was no open consultation. To my knowledge, I can't find anyone who's been overtly told this was the plan. So it was information about this plan to join the cul-de-sacs just infiltrated from one person who happened to protest the subdivision. That's not really in the intent of due process, I would suggest. This road change to worse will be definitely more dangerous. And that's clearly so, two cul-de-sacs, extremely safe. Great for kids, great for my daughters to grow up in, all their friends. It will be a reduced amenity, amenity, so much reduced. And what amazes me is no residents, not even the developers, want this to go ahead. It seems as though they are obliged to pay a bond, this is a condition of their development further, to assess with this roadworks financially. And I've had an engineer, a civil engineer, had a look at the roadworks and he thinks the bond, which I know how much it is, will probably be less than ten percent of the cost of the work. So ratepayers are going to have to wear the rest of it. The, there's not high ranking, let's call it high status heritage buildings around, but I have a national trust listed building that even with just road hardening and sealing nearby started to crumble. And that's nothing to do with roadworks per se. So what I'm advocating for tonight is to, for Alderman James's motion to be passed. I understand from my experience with watching my father wrestle these sorts of issues, was that people are frightened of the priesthood, that if we back down here, we'll have to back down to every little local group protesting. But I would suggest that's not the case. Each of these has its merits. Some protests will of course not be sensible.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I think we understand where you're coming from. I'm sorry, but it really is important that this is not an entertainment venue or a venue like such as that, and it's really important to respect the dignity of the chamber and let people express their views, their fear or hesitation, whether you like them or not. And everyone finds themselves in difficult positions, that's quite a good case, of course.
No more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item nine is motions on notice, nine point one, Alderman Cowley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In accordance with my motion, the count, I wish to move forward motion that council provide intrinsic support for the establishment of a container deposit scheme in Tasmania and lobby the state government to legislate to introduce such a scheme.
Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Walker.
Secondly, that council seeks support with a similar motion at the next 2017 Tasmanian Local Government AGM State Conference, seeking support from the other councils for this necessarily legislation. I'm not going to read what we're going to have in the pack, I'm sure we have Alderman and so, I'm going to just hand these out. This is the Colby and Alway Love Land Coast Keep group newsletter, which is the groundwork for me putting this motion together. I just feel that after years, I feel that after forty odd years of the community work, there comes a time when sometimes you have to change the way you're living. And in the past, where there has been discussion about this particular issue, we always talk about business and the fact that if legislation comes in, it might undermine a business proposal that's in place. However, I think times change. And when we had container legislation, what is, I don't know how long ago, on the mainland side, well over thirty, forty years ago, it was a booming success in the community for local groups, scouts, guides, now we've got land, coast care. And it also was a means, particularly for children, to collect things that they could gain some financial feedback from. Our community now bases a whole lot of its decision making on, particularly in government form, small business and supporting small business. So I think it's time that we look at the community and volunteers and the work they do and the value that they give us, their voluntary work out as an asset, and that they should get value for money. Within the newsletter, it talked about collecting eighteen hundred cans, I'm sure the newsletter add up for me now, and they got over three years, a hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. Now, I'm no good at NAPs, but I did ask the writer of the article, how much was that per can? So he goes back to the days of one and a half cents. I feel that we are undermining all the efforts that we put into waste management, into Australia Day cleanup, into teaching the young generation how to care for their community and their environment. If we want people to become volunteers, we have to give them an incentive to do stuff, and particularly the younger generation. I read a really nice little article, I wish I could have found it again, it was in a business magazine, about a working mother who was teaching her children that if they wanted something, they had to do it. And her belief was that that principle of working and saving gave them the ability to put a value on it. And I think currently, we underestimate and undervalue the work that's done in the community for general waste and recycling methods. Times change. When these containers were first brought out, they might have had a value. I know my grandfather was well over in his grave thinking people only get one and a half cent, when he built a whole hydrate dam to create power to then help manage it. It just makes me angry to think that we are wasting it, the energy and resources and energy for the sake of supporting us to do more. Our communities are our assets and we should be looking for ways to help them. If, for instance, we can't make recycling work in a small business ideology, we have stubborn waste, we have popping, we have other areas that we could look at, redefining, reworking and reviewing our people's work and their lives. But I'd like to see those representatives here on council that want those groups, looking at this legislation and how we can make it.
Thank you. Alderman Walker.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I do know the points hold from the farm. I'm backing this basically on purely economic rational basis. This is a concept that front end loads the waste cost. It puts the cost at the beginning so that somebody else isn't paying for it at the other end. What this basically does is turn every soft drink can or soft drink bottle or equivalent that's on a roadway, on a footpath, in a park, rubbish, to effectively a ten cent piece. I still pick up ten cent pieces when I'm going, when I'm going along on the footpath and I see one. And I think that what this, that this will do will be a boon for some of the community groups. I do remember bottle dryers of years past with the scout group and the big benefit it made to that community organization. But as I said, is this going to deter someone from buying a can of beverage? I pretty much doubt it. It's, it is, it's something that we pay upfront, we can receive at the other end if they wish to do it. Other states do it, and Scout Australia hasn't looked back since it did it. I'm sure reasons will be given around different recycling schemes in different areas and why it's so wrong and why things are unique as here. But we can do this, and when you decide on this motion of notice, reflect on just how much coastline we have and how hard it is for us to sort of clean it up and how much we do benefit from the community groups that are out there doing what they can, but it's never going to be enough and we can never cover it all. And this is one way that will help us out and also generate other means, and it's used a lot. So I seek support.
No more speakers. Alderman Deast.
If they're right to touch it, and I'm for it, playing it gross, this could be turning cash, bottles, cans, and this is up and, you know, if you bring it, maybe if the council says they provide some support, it could be a way of reducing all this human influence and bungish around and on the benefit to the people of the town have a dinner. Because if, when they leave these pegway places, they usually aim to the car, and then on the way, they just chuck it out and it finishes on one of those places, it costs it. And all up the Richmond Road, which is all in a chronic roast chip, and they're always saying they'll have sort of anything to do to help alleviate that problem. I think it's worthwhile.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll support this motion. It does not require the council to undertake any substantive action, simply providing principal support, seek support at the Tasmanian Local Government or State Conference. If this will lead to reduction in empty container litter, I believe, economy would be beneficial.
Mr. Mayor, over the years, it's been a long, hard slog in relation to container deposit legislation. Started in nineteen seventy-five with South Australia, then the Northern Territory had to deal with very few issues in relation to beverage companies. And I won't go into all of those because they're quite complex and will take up more than five minutes. However, the Northern Territory did flog it out in court and actually finally got container deposit legislation. Now we're looking at New South Wales, Western Australia, Queensland, actually coming to fruition in terms of container deposit legislation. And I've always said that when New South Wales, which is the most populous state in Australia, actually looked at container deposit legislation seriously, then the rest of Australia would come along. And there was discussion in terms of the national scheme, that that didn't come to fruition. However, state by state, we look as though we might actually get there, although Victoria's really finding it hard to come to terms with it. I think it's important to note that in two thousand and thirteen, in December two thousand and thirteen, the GAT actually received independent research advice, which actually says that container deposit legislation would save Tasmanian councils about a million dollars per year. And that was because it would reduce terms by collection and processing costs. And then the government actually looked at it in December two thousand and fourteen and decided not to go with container deposit legislation because of the cost of actually getting the containers to interstate because there was going to be at that time no processing in Tasmania. However, things have moved on, particularly because of New South Wales. And on the twenty-sixth of October two thousand and sixteen, on the premier's website, it actually said that the government instructed the EPA to provide advice on the appropriateness of introducing a container deposit scheme in Tasmania, adopting a model that is consistent with that proposed for New South Wales. So the state government is already looking at it, and I see this motion as actually supporting the state government and actually trying to influence the state government to actually work towards container deposit legislation. I think it's also important to note that the EPA gave a presentation to the GAT Waste Reference Group on the eleventh of November two thousand and sixteen, within relation to updating the state waste strategy. And one of the things that the spokesperson actually said was that it should be looked at very carefully as a container deposit scheme. So it looks as though the state government may actually become one as far as this is concerned, not for money.
All right, Alderman Cowley.
Well, I don't come at from something that's hit me because again, I didn't read it before walking through that newsletter, that moment, because some of them probably tell me that they were in Sydney at the time on the beach, the day I was with the baby, and things were worse than the false festival, and no one was following them. So it hits me, it makes me feel that we live in a game, as I said, a very throwaway society. It's great that the state government might be looking at legislation. But part of what I'm saying is looking at review and our whole theories on how we can get the community involved in waste management and recycling. And there's the monetary return for the younger generation who could then see that by putting away little bits, they can get larger amounts, and particularly little bits together. So I think we need to look at a little bit more than just the legislation and look at ways that we can use the legislation to get more value on the efforts in our community to, and on to way, and train and upgrade efforts for children to be involved.
Motion for the chair is as proposed by Alderman Cowley. All those in favor? Against? Carry on. Item nine point two, notice motion, Alderman Walker.
Then, I wish to move the amended motion as circulating, so as to read that council officers undertake an audit of infrastructure in the Riston area, namely areas along the length of Sawnerson's Road, Churchpoint Road, as well as Bar, sorry, Bar, sorry, it's come out now, third time, like, Bar, Cleveland, Grex and Riston Streets.
Have a second, Alderman Cowley, I think, because we've got to mark that.
Thank you. Look, I appreciate the fellow, the feedback that the fellow Aldermen have provided on this matter, and that's why I have amended the wording, and that's been done to firm up or better define the area to be audited. I've been specific in choosing an infrastructure audits. This area is worthy of a master plan, but as we know, master plans take lots of resources and they tend to take lots of years. And there are issues in this area that I believe can't wait that long. And it's probably best to state my notice upfront that if this motion is successful, then it will help an audit be undertaken in time for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budgeting process. And that means that as that process gets underway, Alderman can be better informed about the needs, priorities, and associated costs for the work that might need to be done in the area. And the top priority is for council to play its part in making this area a less attractive destination for hooning and then similar anti-circle behaviour. If you look at the two top photos on the, on the motion that I circulated, you'll see the wide pitchman area at the end of Sawnerson's Road. It's an attraction for hooning and, look, you don't have to squint your eyes too much to see the legacy of that in those photos. You know, hooning may well be a policing matter, but there are things that we can play a role in, especially for design, that can make this a less, I can give you a lot of it happen. As it stands at that moment, or at this moment, the wide pitchman area there is possibly second only to the police academy as far as the skip pan goes in on the eastern shore. It's wise and to the desert street. Generally, this is a really quiet area. And, you know, so such behaviour, it's not just the noise is stark, it's geographically, if you think about it, it's almost an antipathy about where the housing is around that. But it's not that close to, to other police stations. So it's not a matter that's going to be solved through policing alone, even though technically that's, that's where responsibility for such matters lie. But there are safety risks when such activities occurring in an area like here, let alone the detriment to amenity. And I consider that that's pretty concerning. So following an earlier Alderman's request, start that book into the matter, and I'll just, it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just weary. The engineer Ross Graham is here tonight. Mr. Graham, have, have, has the area roughly been investigated and is it deemed that it's going to be an intense process to do some calming around the area?
No, that's clearly yes, on Alderman briefing that we're talking about.
Is that likely to be resource intensive and cost intensive or is it severely?
Sounds like a dark picture. Sorry, yeah. So I think we might understand the thrust of where you're going there, Alderman Walker.
The reason I guess I was going there, Mr. Mayor, is that it's imperative that if such work is to be done, and I think there will be a strong case made for it, and that it will get, might get approved or should get approved for the next budget, financial year starts on July one, but ends in June thirty. And for these issues to cling along like true to them for something to be done, I don't know if it's necessarily reasonable. It isn't reasonable. So I'm hopeful that through this process with the audit, things, the needs of short pools will be identified and we can enter that budgeting process in a stronger position to sort of prioritize an area that needs it. I guess the other effort with an audit is that we'll get an overview of some of the other works in the area that might be required or the area might be at the front. If you think about Sawnerson's Road, it's, it's right on the pool shore, it's really quite an lively area, very flat. So if you were going to get a shift halfway, probably one of the easiest ones could be developed in the area, that's something that might come out of it. But again, that might be something for down the road. I also understand that we may be responsible for the program there, that's something that might be coming up in the orders to state of that. So I thank Alderman for their time and hearing is through, and I do thank the residents that have come here tonight to hear us discuss this matter. I seek council support and I hope that we can get it, so the process underway in the area.
I just agree with it, and I think that there are many occasions where small pockets get overlooked, and I feel that the admission porters showed adequate support for an audit.
Alderman James. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The questions that have arisen, as far as I'm concerned, as Alderman Walker has made mention of that, in relation to calming in the area, less attachment area for hooning. And then in the broader context of his motion, he's saying that council officers undertake an audit of infrastructure in the Riston area from the length of Sawnerson's Road, Churchpoint Road, as well as Bar, Cleveland, Grex and Riston. They are all the streets, basically, that are in Riston. So what we are really saying here is, do we want to provide an open check for this to be listed? As to the works of curb and gutting in Bar Street, I think most of Bar Street does have been gutted. There are some streets which are still subject, or A Street is still subject to a subdivision which is partly gravel and very rocky, and it's very difficult for councils really being to collect a rubbish vehicle to negotiate. So look, I understand that what Alderman Walker wants to do is to spend a few dollars in Sawnerson Road, and it's a dear place to leave. I've spent countless times over there and door knocking, but to have an open margin like this, which is basically the order of infrastructure. like this, which is basically the audit of infrastructure, and if we understand the meaning of the word infrastructure, it means roads, perhaps culvers, curbs and gutters and so on. And the very basic approach to the offices to do a sort of broad audit of the whole of East Riston is, in my view, really taking it too far. I would have thought that if there are problems with calming in the area and the hoons in that large open space where the old pump used to pull up and where the car parking was when the bridge was knocked down, then there should be some calming measures there because it is a hoon playground. But to actually ask the offices to undertake an audit of all of East Riston, or Riston as it's commonly known, I think it's a big ask. And therefore to have it for consideration in the seventeen eighteen budget, what are they going to do? Are they going to say, well, we need to seal along Sawnerson's Road for its entirety? Do we want them to consider a reducing the area of turning circle near the old Riston pump and so on? I would have thought that if there is, there are key problems here with, with hoods and that area that is close to or where the, the actual old pump launching area was or Torrey birthing point was, then that's great. But to have a blanket approval, and this could cost thousands. And I just think that at this stage, to give that to the offices, to try to come up with that, an audit of the hoppel of East Riston, because this is basically what the motion's saying, I think it's just asking too much. And I would have preferred, and I would have supported, the basis of what the key areas of concern are, and they are the basic calming and also the area to reduce the hooning in the area, so make it more in keeping with the amenity of the Ristons in that area. Alderman James. What's put the, the recommendation, the motion by Alderman Walker now? I think it's very sensible, actually. I think it's about time we did have an audit in this area. Now, one of the things I don't think Alderman Walker does expect, and it'd be a little item, put in the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget process, because that would probably be impossible. But I'm sure some of the items that can be done early possibly would be worth a talk. And then again, it's up to us to see if they're funded or not. But I think it is about time we did have an audit, Alderman Walker, this area, I think it's a very good motion, and I think it deserves our support.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The motion for an audit doesn't call for any work to be done. An audit is to determine what is here and what might be done or needs to be done, subject to a favorable funding, and Alderman, with council approval. So it's a debate idea.
I just want to reiterate what Alderman Kuzick has said, because we really are only discussing a motion for an order, we're not discussing the duration or depth of works to be done. So that is further consideration in budget. May I ask, through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Graham, whether he would have any idea of what this could have been, depending on what depth of audit was undertaken, what cost would be involved and what time, and could it be actually done from, from within council, without physically having all the strength?
Please, I haven't come at the cost of all that, not the conflict. Great, it's difficult to audit, yeah. An audit makes the council aware, wasn't it, even more stuffy, surely because it was one of the guys doing expenditure, he said, "We ordered", I mean, if the community, it makes us as a community more aware of what's needed. So then we go out and prioritise all these things. So I can see what we're holding.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'm envisaging that this audit would relate to risk and safety. So through you, in relation to right of reply, could we actually get a little bit of information as to what Alderman Walker is envisaging the audit would actually take, so what happens? And I think the other important thing that has already been mentioned by a number of Alderman's is that in doing an audit, there would actually, it'd be the outcome of the audit would be a list of issues, a priority listing, so that to look at what is the most important, that's exactly right, I just said that, I just said this, I said that.
Through the chair, please, Alderman James.
That there would be a priority listing that we could then look at in terms of which years we would be budgeting, so particular items for. So I think there is quite a way to go yet, that we would actually get the audit and then we would look at what was required and when it was required and budget.
Mr Mayor, I think this is actually quite a good initiative, because as Alderman Walker has pointed out, Riston is obviously an area where there are some infrastructure needs that need detention. But I'd just like to say, in relation to this process, I think it is unfortunate that we do need to focus on a particular area, and perhaps it would be a good approach if after this exercise, we look at whether we can have some kind of a process for seeing across the entire city, you know, what, what infrastructure needs upgrading and improvement. And, you know, we can put those matters on the capital works budgets, or, sorry, on the capital works programme, and then, and then look at what needs prioritising. Because the fact that we need to undertake this exercise for a particular area, I think possibly highlights that we are lacking a general process for looking at degrade infrastructure across the entire city.
I advise.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You only get so many minutes, and I think the full photos give you volumes as far as what degrade infrastructure looks like. I was very specific in choosing the concept of an infrastructure audit versus a master plan. The infrastructure audit is taking account of the state of what's there already. So we are largely talking about the hard infrastructures, the likes of the roads, the curbs, guttering, and I would suggest the fire ramp as well. Number one priority is around the safety, and certainly with that big white bitumen area there, that is giving active safety concerns at the moment. And I believe that what this process will allow us to do is ensure that that is correct, that that's the priority issue through the budgeting, but also applying informed and rigor to the budgeting process in general. As Alderman Bondrada has pointed out, this is not trying to achieve everything at once, it's trying to see what are the needs there, and then you do it on a hierarchical process. I think, I understand where Alderman Kuzick's coming from, Mr Mayor, around not wanting to have a hundred and fifty infrastructure audits around this, I do understand that. However, I do think there's some specific issues happening right there, right now, that are unique to this area. And as far as infrastructure goes, one of the things we can do around that, around budgeting times, I can go on a, on a road should basically be the sort of more of a, in these exides. And in my five years in council, we haven't been to this area any times, without any of those trips. So I do seek support, it's not a big budget component, it's not a big pipe dream, this is a hard, tincted approach to looking at what the state of things are and planning for its future, noting that there is an active safety concern in that area.
Motion for the chair is as circulated by Alderman Walker, the way is in favor? Against? Carry on. Item nine point three is a no disemission Alderman James.
Given this notice given, I move the following motion.
Okay, hold for second, please.
Alderman Farm, I appreciate your support, that, for seconding the motion, thank you. That given recent concerns relating to the completion of Torren Street, Richmond, and the informal correspondence received from the owners of three and nine Torrens indicated their satisfaction conditional on the case of nine Torren Street on the undertaking that works to formalise the driveway access or retaining the cul-de-sac arrangements in Torren Street, it'd be noted. Mr Mayor, the question of us inviting an application from the residents is, in fact, according to the offices, and we take their advice on this, that it would tend to give council support to opening up the connections of, of the two sections currently within cul-de-sacs of Torren's Road. The question has arisen as to whether or not the road should be reopened, should be opened, and/or whether the cul-de-sacs should be retained. Two of the property owners have in fact agreed to the retention of the cul-de-sacs, and there's one residence in Bathurst Street that hasn't been contacted as yet. But I hold that three property owners constitute an application to council under section fifty-six of Lupa, nineteen ninety act, nineteen ninety-three, to put to council an application to make a minor amendment to the subdivision application that was put through in two thousand and nine. The school association, the Richmond School Association, has presented a petition to council, and there were two hundred and sixty-five signatories to that, and most of those signatories were within the vicinity of, of the Torrens and also in the greater area near the school. The other question that has arisen is in relation to the, the basis of section fifty-six amendment that can be lodged on the basis that the three property owners at three nine and eight Bathurst, three nine Torrens and eight Bathurst Street submit an application for a minor amendment under fifty-six of the Lupa Act nineteen ninety-three. That would come to council, and it's my understanding that the only representations that would be considered are the two representations that were lodged at the time that the two thousand and nine matter was advertised in the Richmond Munis Palace. One of those persons is deceased, but the other person, in fact, is, is living in Torren Street, and I understand it that that person would have to be consulted, consulted in relation to the application of a minor amendment under section fifty-six to council for its consideration. There are very strong provisions under section fifty-six of the Lupa Act nineteen ninety-three, and that would in fact rest upon the council officer to go through and determine as to whether this is a minor amendment or otherwise a major. Alternatively, in addition, I should say, as to whether it has a detrimental effect on the residents or those persons within the area. I can only say, Mr Mayor, that there's only one representative who can actually respond to that as part of that consultation process, and that was that person who submitted a representation back when this matter of the subdivision was considered. So there is a mechanism under section fifty-six of Lupa for a application to come through from the three property owners to seek a minor amendment under section fifty-six of the Lupa Act nineteen ninety-three, and that would be presented to council. And there is in the motion here, under item three, that council could consider waiving those fees. And it's my understanding that the application fee is about hundred and eighty-two dollars, because this doesn't fall within the rezoning sort of scum of fees, it's merely the fee that's applicable to a minor amendment. So in actual fact, the reason for getting this motion to council is in favour of consideration.
Thank you. Alderman Farm.
My second to this motion, Mr New, on the grounds of openness and accountability and the gin public that are here tonight, and they seem to be totally confused into weird things going on. This motion is not actually to make a petition about anything. It is purely an information motion about the possibilities of the owners of the land who can, to the owners of the land, who could submit an application to council with planning authority to consider an amendment under section fifty-six. This sort of information could have been forwarded to them by mail, I'm not privy to the fact of whether it was approved or not. It is here as a motion on our agenda, and in that context, I wish to address the fact that this motion as an info motion, motion, there is nothing really for council to decide on, but it's going to touch on, as the owners of the land choose to or choose not to submit an application to consider an amendment.
Other speakers?
Alderman New. I, I just have a couple of questions. One of them is to Alderman James, which he can address in his right of reply, which is if this motion is just presenting information rather than actual results. The second question, which perhaps the general manager or Mr Lovell can answer through you, Mr Mayor, is, given that it is giving information and noting what seems to be the case with the process of lodging amendments and how the amendment can be considered, is, is the statements made, are the statements made in the motion actually consistent with what the process is?
Through, Mr Mayor, the answer that is, yes, I believe the process is proper, as outlined in the motion there. The big question mark, I suppose, in terms of that process is whether or not it meets the test, if any application did come forward would meet the tests of section fifty-six and as a minor amendment.
Alderman James.
That's the motion confused. If the residents, as I understand, want to lodge an application, why do they need council invitation? As I understand, I'm looking for correction, council cannot initiate anything in this manner unless an application is submitted under section fifty-six amendment. So I'm not even sure why we're discussing it. The residents ought to, to initiate action and apply, it's up to the residents, I'm just confused.
I'm not necessarily confused by this motion, I'm actually not happy with this motion at all, because I think that there are processes that have been put in place, that the permit has been issued, and that this actually is trying to sell out somebody that council can make an adjustment to that permit based on a petition and based on the removal of certain conditions under section fifty-six. And the council would consider waiving the council's usual fees, which again is preempting. So I stand before you saying that I'm actually not happy with this, I think this is council interfering in a process, it doesn't need to, it needs to leave, this to the normal processes, and I don't like this sort of freedom being set round the table. Thank you.
The committee has here personally addressed that two of the property owners have agreed or have said and provided in writing that they, to their satisfaction, for the retention of the cul-de-sac arrangements in Torren Street. Alderman James, the owners have in fact been in.
Alderman James, I feel obliged to ask you to clarify the point, though, that's B and A and to address, and that is that it's already open to the landlord's concern to apply for amendment under section fifty-six. That was the question that was raised and we're seeking responsibility for this.
Yeah. A lot of people in the committee don't understand the process, that is a fact, whether it's the DA of subdivision process or otherwise, they do not understand what is involved in seeking an amendment.
They do not understand what is involved in seeking an amendment to a subdivision proposal. So by being open and transparent in our advice to the community at large, we are spelling out what the process is in order for the owners of the land who do not want to see a road connected to go through a process. And you could ask a number of people in the community about section 56, and they say, what is that? What is section 56? They wouldn't know. From tonight's debate, the people in the gallery will not understand, and also understand that there is a process by which they can go through to have a change, if it's considered as meeting the tests under section 56, of changing a subdivision proposal back in 2009, which does not necessarily equate to what is the case in 2016. There are a number of factors that are going to come into this. The Parents and Friends Association, the Richmond Primary School have undertaken an audit, an audit on this particular matter, and have come up with some real safety and risk concerns. The council has not undertaken any traffic management or any audit in relation to this. So we are basing, or the people are basing their information on the audit, on the traffic report that was at their expense obtained in order to provide council with the information that there are some real risks and safety matters that could impact upon the actual schoolchildren and also the residents in that area. So by having this motion on the books, that there's the mechanism that they can now follow through, and they are better advised, Mr. Mayor, of what section 56 is and how they can exercise their rights, that's the cause, in order to treat that.
Thank you, Alderman James. So the motion for the chair is as proposed by Alderman James, all those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. I'll be ten, ten point one, reports from single and joint authorities. Southern Tasmanian Council's authority, please note that the quarterly report for December is there and to be received by council. Thank you, Alderman James. Any questions in regard to the quarterly report? Okay, so put motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously.
Copying refused disposal site joint authority, Alderman. This was for the last quarterly meeting itself on last Thursday, together with an inspection of the site and the sea cell, and those that attended, I'm sure, but an overall appreciation of where it has progressed to, and I'd like to thank them for this for everyone.
Home West Street Authority, Alderman James.
Thank you. Tasmanian Water Corporation, well, it's no secret that there's been a fair bit of action in regard to that since the treasurer announced last Friday, and proceeding that the previous Sunday, that he intended to, or he mounted a very strong campaign against Tas Water, and particularly the owners of Tas Water. I can advise today, and I'll table them, there's a, and I think that's been circulated to Alderman, the general manager, a media release from the chairman of Tas Water refuting many of the claims that treasurer's own in regard to the work that Tas Water is doing and the banks that they have in place. And there's also one here from the president of Elgad in regard to a general management committee meeting itself today, with some advice that we need further information from the treasurer as to what he proposes, if all the councils consider anything in any sensible way. But I'll table those two media reports, please.
Absolutely.
In relation to the comments about oil water, I do remember reading documents on record, I remember what it was, but there was a list of councils that had water, oil and need to call it water notice. Could we be, have been given that to us again, those councils that are on oil water alert, how often they happen, and what were the costs projected for fixing that?
Yeah, just to confirm, I think you're interested in townships that are on board water alerts rather than councils.
Yes.
And I think there is a.
The costing, I'm interested in the costing and to resolve any of those issues. Alderman, council and I have had a few talks about rainwater.
The quarterly, last quarterly report would contain some information regarding that, but I'll certainly take that on notice in terms of, and get back to them. Any other questions? That's all. Okay, so moving there, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies, and none in the agenda, but going around, Alderman Verrill.
Minutes for the Billings Community are 10th of February and the disability asset that the city could have been there for.
How's it going, please?
Here I have the minutes of the society media committee set on 16th of February.
Alderman Verrill.
I have the minutes of the set date of the meeting for the current coordination advisory committee and the February meeting, and the current state of the situation.
Alderman James. We have the minutes of the Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee of the 9th of February 2017. One of the major items that was discussed was in relation to the current Portugal Trail and Crown Land Yacht Club car park. We had a presentation from Mr. Wicks, the county corporate lawyer, regarding the request for a minor amendment. The discussion that took place was that the committee recommends to council that it does not support the present application for a minor amendment to the subdivision permit, that the committee recommends that council enter into negotiations with the Crown and the Department of State Road for future development of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure on Lot 9, because of the safety concerns to pedestrians and cyclists on Cambridge Road. And that was carried unanimously by the committee and the representatives on the committee. It is interesting to note, Mr. Mayor, that we have received advice from a planner that it's a bit unusual for an application for a minor amendment under section 56 to be considered by council at a meeting. But nevertheless, there are determinations within the actual conditions of LUPA under section 56, and also under section 57 or 58, that we can, in fact, modify a request by conditioning proposed to meeting planning authority's requirements. So when this comes to council, there may be, there may be a recommendation that would come from the floor to say that under section 56, the council may proceed to amend the permit to cater for whatever we need to discuss with the State Department of State Road, or in fact, the Yacht Club. So let's just see how the debate pans out in relation to that. And at the moment, the minutes are here, and Mr. Mayor, he has had his plate on board, and we'll see whether section 56 gets a go and see when it's considered down the track. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your Tracks and Trails report, Alderman James. Oh, I might add, I might add, just in case it's reported, I did, actually, a friend and I walked the Kangaroo Bay Ribbelle track on Sunday. It's great. I'm just a bit concerned, the general manager, of our vehicle access off Gordonstil Road, it's wide open, and in fact, you know, and I would assume that when we have our official opening, which has been earmarked by the general manager in a recent council acceptance, that there may be some provision for some hollards there to stop vehicles actually entering the.
Thank you, Alderman James. Any other reports?
I would like to advise, we recently, last week, had a meeting of the Havas National Airport Community Aviation, it's often correct, and I will be circulating the minutes and tabling that that's. Now, the reports, 11.1, that the information in the weekly briefing reports, the 6th, 13th, 20th of February, be noted. Alderman Verrill, seconded, Alderman Walker, only questions on the weekly briefing reports. Moving on, motion, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.2, determination of petitions, 11.2.1, petition for the planned connection of two Torrens Street cul-de-sacs, Alderman James.
I'd like to ask a question through you.
Well, we need it on the table first, on, there is the recommended motion.
There is.
Are you making that?
There may need to be a change, and I would like to ask through you to the general.
Thank you.
Um, through, Mr. Mayor, the question I was asked was in relation to, and I can just find my, in part B of the recommendation, the words, and it was iterated Friday, there is now no capacity to review the decision. In essence, that is correct, there is no capacity to review the decision, but there is capacity to review the permits. I just want to make that clear, but the word there, there's no capacity to review the decision is correct, but there is a mechanism to review a permit, but not the decision. I can clarify that. So just on that, there is no change to the recommendation. No, I don't believe there's any change required to the recommendation, because what the recommendation says is that council can't review their decision, the decision stands as the issue of a planning permit, but subject to a section, let's call it a section 56, a minor amendment being lodged, we can consider a change to the permit, but council's decision they made back whenever, back in 2009 sometime, cannot be changed per se. I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Mayor, that that is the case.
Well, look, we're not discussing this yet, we need a motion on the table before we can take this any further. Can I have someone move and take it, Alderman James, are you moving it?
I'd like to move recommendation A and B and C.
Well, okay, so A is moved, B and C haven't been, that's been seconded, would you like to speak to the motion?
I just find that the ongoing discussion about this is redundant. Council knows that it stands in relation to the process, planning processes, and at this point in time, we have, we cannot go outside our authorities' power, recommendation A is an option for me that I would roll by.
Do you respect her? Yes, I do. I think Alderman James is right, because by accepting the notes of the petition, it doesn't go into any detail with respect to whether or not council will or will not make a determination in relation to a section 56 application. Fact of the matter is that by just noting the intent of the position, of petition, it leaves it open for the people or for those owners of the properties in Torrens and Bathurst to be able to lodge a, an application under section 56. If you read this to the letter, it is misleading, because it is saying that on a planning permit condition, in other words, that given council has previously determined the requirement to connect Torrens Street on a planning permit condition, as the planning authority, there is now no capacity to review. Now, the general manager has just made the point that with regard to the.
It's been. Yes, please. I think the note, the semi-communication's been debased, and I couldn't see the difference.
Yeah, yeah, Alderman James, I would like to speak next on this, but can I?
So it's misleading partly, and that's why I think Alderman James has moved the motion, that means that the council notes the intent of the petition, and then it's up to the owners of Torrens, Bathurst to submit a application for a minor amendment. The wording of this is misleading, because there is still on a planning permit condition, it ties the planning permit condition to what the general manager has just said as part of the decision. It's best to leave it out, because then there is no confusion in relation to whether or not the planning permit condition is the decision of council. And therefore, it may mean that a person or the owners of Torrens and Bathurst could come forward and say, look, we have an application, but the reading of part B is that, given on a planning permit condition, there's no capacity for the decision of council to be actioned.
Um, I've got some real reservations in the way we're going in this debate. The first is, by removing C, you're saying that we can't even write to the petitioners at saying what the outcome of our meeting is. Now, I think that's disingenuous to the best, and C's got to be in there, we've got to be able to write to the petitioners and tell them the outcome of this consideration. But more importantly, on B, and I think this is really serious, is that by talking about section 56, and sure, there's a mechanism to go down this path, but there's a prima facie case that this is not a simple minor amendment, there are other reasons why it may not turn out to be that way, and this discussion has been creating expectation that people can lodge a section 56 and achieve a satisfactory outcome, and I think that we are really creating a false representation and false impression by continuing this debate as we are. It is extremely problematic that a section 56 can qualify in this case.
And I'm going to foreshadow, B and C, this motion, so I want it.
A and B. Yeah.
Right, are there any other speakers on the motion before the chair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out that at the meeting of the 23rd of September 2009, there was a resolution that is almost exactly the same in wording as the one that we, well, as the one that had been actually recommended to us by the office, it's not the one that is now before us, the motion. And it's interesting that on that occasion, council was unanimous, the whole council actually resolved that council notes the intent of the petition, that given the council has previously determined the subdivision application, and that there is now no capacity to review the decision, no further action is required on the petition, and that the ceiling of Torrens Street, which will be considered in the next budget. So it's a little bit different, but certainly B is exactly the same. And on that occasion, Alderman Campbell, Alderman Shipman, Alderman James, Alderman Farland, Alderman Pearce, and Alderman Von Verto, who were on the council at that time, actually were part of the unanimous decision. So I think it needs to be taken into account that we have already made a decision in relation to it.
Look, Alderman James, order, Your Majesty, you don't have an opportunity to speak right now. Are there any other speakers? Right, we file, Alderman James.
In moving this motion with the changes, it's purely about what I still consider to be openness and accountability, and that people understand what's on the line. And so, within the context of the previous discussion, section 46 is available for people to use if they choose so, and I would stand.
Motion for the chair is A, Alderman, all those in favour? Against? The motion is lost, Alderman Campbell.
I'll make the recommendations A, B, and C, they're quite clear, all the things under the.
Quite clearly pointed out what has happened, the history of the whole thing. So after the people outside to make their own moves, their own decisions, it's not the council's responsibility, it's part of the time.
Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I didn't support Alderman James' motion, because it doesn't actually give any substantive response to the petitioners. it doesn't actually give any substantive response to the petitioners, um, and it's important when we receive a petition and council is required, um, under regulations to respond to a petition, that we actually have some kind of response, other than saying we've just noted the petition. Um, we've just had the advice from the General Manager, um, in relation to part B, that there is no capacity to review the decision, um, and of course, C is very important, because we need to notify petitioners what our result is. Uh, now, we, I could go into the arguments about, um, the connection of the road, but um, in terms of the whole process, that she was relevant, because there is no mechanism by which council can initiate any kind of revisiting of this decision. Um, it's a, it's a decision that's been made by council as a planning authority, um, and it's only, given that it hasn't been appealed, it's only open to the original applicants to seek an amendment to that decision, um, having, even if they choose to do so, there's no guarantee that it would be, uh, regarded as a minor amendment, but that's, that's not for council to concern ourselves with, when we don't have a, um, application for amendment before us. We cannot initiate any change to the original decision, and that is key in responding to the petitioners. Um, regardless of what their concerns are, um, I think the important thing is to communicate to them regardless of the merits of the connection of the road, our end in this matter are tied.
Yes, firstly, through you, a question, we'll probably end up with the, uh, with Mr Graham, should this road be built, what are the mechanisms or processes around investigating and becoming from a two-way road into a one-way road?
Yes, Mr Mayor, um, I'm there.
Uh, just to further illuminate in this, that sounds like a relatively straightforward process, it's not trying to tie you up to a section fifty-six, it's not possibly something bigger than that, that is a mechanism that would be available to any place, should this road be built. None of it's to eliminate, is what it's about.
I think, uh, the point's well made.
Yep, well, I, I, I see, there's been a fair bit of debate around this, and, um, I sometimes decide a motion, design people motions, motions about nothing. Now, this is a real issue, but the outcomes of the notice of motion, and the way, the way the petition was, uh, the response to the petition was tweaked and put before us, substantively wasn't going to change that. It was allowing, it was allowing perceptions of that.
So, through the Chair.
Not me. Talking to you, Alderman James, I might be talking near you, not beside you.
All right, let us keep this civil.
This is the response process, the legacy is of two thousand and nine, and how people go live in that way is a matter for them. The avenue that is available, has been discussed tonight, um, should that avenue not be pursued, then I certainly as a council, or a member of this council, will be doing a pursuing investigation on this road being. It's a petition, and we should respond to it, as Alderman Campbell has tabled.
Other speakers? Right, we're done, Alderman Campbell. The motion then is as recommended, all those in favour? Against? Carrie. Eleven point two point two is a petition for access issues surrounding the premises. Thank you all, the Pearce, seconded, Alderman Walker. Would you like to speak to it?
I think so.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, I would, um, we already know the process around how we did change some of the rating mechanisms within Clarence, uh, as a consequence, some long-term issues in the area have been raised, as a possibility for something for us to move up the chain. Um, when we're talking about the matters that have been petitioned here, we are talking about, um, access for people that may not have the same dexterity and ability to navigate, um, paths that aren't in a premium order, this is about, um, looking at things and looking at how we can improve social connectedness, uh, there are two big aged facilities in the area, the premises have tabled a motion, and if you think about some of the recreational activities there, and connections through to the villages, et cetera, uh, I think it's a pretty reasonable petition to respond to, in the way that we're going to.
Other speakers? Yes, there's no need for right or right, all those in favour? Carrie unanimously. Now advised that council intends to sit as a planning authority under LUPA. Eleven point three point one is a DA at four to five, uh, at five five page, Lagoon. Good morning, for an additional one, Alderman Campbell.
No chance.
Seconding, Alderman Furley. Any discussion? Motion, all those in favour? Carrie unanimously, that completes our business, I saw another dust.
Can I talk in respect of Alderman Lee?
Uh, Alderman Walker, there's no need to move.
Eleven point three point two, following a question at the briefing session on Friday, uh, in relation to light set back from the boundary, uh, light pole, light tower set back from the boundary, I'm in a position where I'm not satisfied that the information provided council was correct, and I would like to draw the items to allow further investigation, that's on the agenda, I can only do so with the legal council, so I'm pretty confident there'll be no section fifty-nine on the motion.
Second, you. It's a procedural motion, so I suppose, all those in favour? Against? Thank you, and that's Carrie, and that's the planning authority. Moving on to the governments, eleven point seven point one, the fourth report, Alderman Campbell, seconding, Alderman Furley, are there any, is there any discussion on the fourth report? The motion, all those in favour? Against, uh, that's Carrie unanimously. Eleven point seven point two is transferred to council, two hundred and twenty-nine, Ring Doctor Ray Richmond, moved Alderman Farrelly, seconded, Alderman Von Verto. Any speakers? The motion, all those in favour? Carrie unanimously. Seven point seven point three, post-transfer, one hundred and thirty-eight, East Devon Highway, Alderman Walker, seconding, Alderman Furley. Speakers?
I'll try and be brief, Mr Mayor, as you may well be aware, two meetings ago, we deferred this motion, and what a difference two meetings makes, I believe that, uh, as it stands before us now, taking this on board, be a rational use of the land, there may be mechanisms to, to, uh, not fund it, it could be a benefit, I also appreciate that the pictures still show some deviations of the curb and guttering that allow free flow on from Hardley on West Devon Highway, so it's support.
Thank you.
Um, Mr Mayor, I think this is a functional proposal, and I know that when, I remember mentioning that it's planned to council in relation to the untidiness of it, most of its life, um, and the fact that, um, the Crown didn't have any maintenance program for this, so the whole thing has been, to come to council, it'll start to tidy up that particular area and make it nice and, um, suitable for the, this, um, area.
Right, fine, the motion, all those in favour? Carrie unanimously, thanks, Alderman Pearce. Seven point seven point four, that being a response, Alderman Campbell, seconding, Alderman Farrelly. Speakers?
Yes, Mr Mayor, um, I've read through this, and I might be swayed by the debate, but at this stage, my intention is to vote against this. Um, it's captured in a way that it's about, uh, the intent of, um, you know, considering community safeties and values and consulting, um, but the bottom line is that, right at this moment, there's probably enough poker machines in the community that would drain every last cent from every problem gambler around, and this is trying to be put up as a way to, to deal with such issues by speaking with the community. What this does is create an impugnance for any new player that may have the most, highest levels of, um, harm minimization, maybe doing, maybe providing us, you know, in a really good way, or a clever artistic way, and at the same time, giving every established venue with electronic gaming machines, a complete free ride as far as where they are now, they've got the machines, carry on as you like, any new player, no way, will create some obstacles for that, so I'm, I'm not comfortable with that, and I'm not comfortable when I read through this, and for, of all places, the ACT can be seen as a paragon of virtue, I guess, and such, let's talk about some poker machine numbers, twenty percent of the welts, uh, this is a data statistic, so, you know, fact check, you might find that I'm wrong, but it used to be twenty percent of the welts machines were in Australia, ten percent of the welts machines were in New South Wales, and ACT had the highest concentration of any jurisdiction, and it gets worse, because in the ACT, this paragon of virtue that's mentioned here, guessing one of the biggest owners of the poker machines are there, the Labour Club, or one of the biggest donors to a political party, and I know that the former Labour Chief Minister, John Stanhope, has raised his contempt and concern about this on multiple occasions, but no, the ACT is what we should be looking at first for our, our good management, so I understand the intent, but the actual outcome of this policy does nothing for the established machines from in the community, so am I to support it?
Thank you. Pass this, you're second, I'm sorry, Alderman Farrelly, um, but we've been past six, that's the second.
Are you in the street?
No, I gave you the opportunity.
Why did you?
Yes.
Oh, fine.
Sorry. Any other speakers? Alderman Furley.
I, I support, uh, the motion, purely because it's better than nothing, and, um, it actively addresses the future, and I suppose retrospectively, it's really hard to, to, um, implement changes in what is, you know, existing at this time, so it's an attempt to, to colour, to, to stop flow, and it's a bit like a bottle shop, it is the same for the flies, that we can have a continued proliferation, so it's about stopping the influx, and it's about creating, um, a future going forward that won't make the mistake of the past.
I retire. Motion is that we endorse the bar response, all those in favour? Against, Carrie. Eleven point, uh, we've got to recall, Alderman Pearce, first. Jules get, Jules get. Eleven point seven point five is a visit to Bin Zhao City. Alderman Campbell, seconded, Alderman Furley. Uh, do you suspect, Alderman Furley, would you suspect the motion?
I need to say, Mr Mayor, that we actually discussed this in a workshop situation, or a workshop, but an item for discussion after a workshop, um, and it was agreed, we gave, um, this, because of the fact that the invitation had come, and it was a polite measure, and it was a good way of creating good working relationships going forward, the necessary component to get, uh, the project, um, off on the right footing, uh, there is a lot to be learnt, a lot to be seen, and it may not necessarily be the last of a visit, but, um, it's a very necessary part of the process of creating a good working relationship.
I think this, uh, this, for these stations, I'm thinking about what the attendees, people regard, uh, other people doing visits, I mean, they do a more, uh, a social basis, and they, uh, first place, this because they've got to trust, you have to do initial, uh, visits, a, uh, signature, uh, to see whether they can trust or not, and then, uh, you've got to do a primary exploratory trip if you want to do actually establish any further contact with them and any success, I think this could be a good addition.
Mr Mayor, um, look, we, we now have economic ties in general city through the Kangaroo Bay Hotel Development, um, it was appropriate that we look at this invitation after we dealt with that, um, planning application, uh, because, you know, it's important to see that the two are, the two are not tied, that we're not, we're not influenced in any way, um, by this decision, um, but, uh, you know, I think there is a potential to explore further ties, um, in terms of this trip, um, on its own, it probably won't have any, um, immediate benefits for the councils, but, but it may be, you know, with an exploratory visit to begin with, followed by other visits to, um, to strengthen those economic ties and explore those economic opportunities, um, I think that they could be quite a lot of economic potential. Uh, it's particularly important that we, we will pass, um, uh, economic development through, um, exploring business relationships in China, where, whether it be, um, us exporting, um, goods and services to China, or, um, or China investing in our city, uh, because when the, when the runway extension comes on board, and there are direct flights to China, or potential direct flights to China, um, that also creates the potential for a huge amount of, um, trade and investment opportunities, follow tourist opportunities, um, it's, it's going to be, I, I think we underestimate, can't overestimate how big this is going to be, um, the potential of it, and, you know, it's really important we get us high to the action. Um, I did actually just have one question in terms of, um, part B, um, we are presumably limiting it to, uh, mere three aldermen, so maximum of four aldermen from the council, um, if more than, I doubt it will happen, but in the situation that more than four aldermen expressed an interest in joining this delegation, would we then revisit those numbers, or conduct a ballot, or how would we resolve?
The intent at this stage is that, uh, we invite people to nominate, uh, and if we have more than three, then we have to bring it back to the next council meeting of that, but, uh, the intention is two or three, as that's sort of considered the appropriate number, uh, we don't want to just put more people on the go, that's not really the reason why we should be going. Any other speakers? Alderman Jones?
Uh, Bin Zhao is the home city of the Shang Roy, Shandong Investment Company proposing the hotel and education facility at Kangaroo Bay. Is it premature for us to be sending anybody to, um, Bin Zhao, and in particular, the, um, discussions would involve Shang Roy, uh, Shandong, I'm sure, in the discussions? My concern is the timing of this invitation to visit. There was an earlier invitation that was sent out to us prior to the DA being considered, that was in writing, and also, there was a private meeting between the mayor and a couple of officials the following morning, which none of us were aware of, and that's one of the questions I did ask the mayor, was that what happened there, and in his opinion, was it probably better that the council was advised about that, and opportunity for other councillors to attend, that was on the record. The other matter that is, um, of concern is the memorandum of understanding. In the GM's words, it would be signed, not a binding document, but would explore the potential of a more formal, um, agreement. Any memorandum of understanding, in my opinion, if it's signed by four members of the council, has no binding on the rest of the council, it should not, um, be even entertained prior to the matter being signed off by the council. It should not, um, be even entertained prior to the matter being signed off by the council. In other words, in the documentation that's been presented to us tonight, the general manager has said that there will be memorandum of understanding signed, and it's on page, uh, one thirty-four, I think it is, if requested. Well, okay, but even so, if a memorandum of understanding is signed, it should not be binding on the rest of the council because the council, as a whole, sitting as a council, should be able to determine what, what that delegation is basically deciding, uh, on behalf of the council. And that's not allowed because it could lead on to what my next point is, that the Shandong may in the memorandum, memorandum of understanding say, look, we've hauled down eight hundred and forty thousand dollars for car parking, a shortfall in car parking at the hotel, and we would like to offset that with a reserved number of parking spaces to the value in the new multi-storey car park. Now, I'm not saying that will happen, but it may happen because the memorandum of understanding, even though it's not binding in a sense, it is something that the, the, the delegation and also the, um, uh, Bin Zhao may decide is appropriate to keep currents to that particular memorandum of understanding and say, well, look, you've signed off on this MOU, therefore the eight hundred and forty thousand dollars that we've had to pay in lieu of the deficiency of eighty-four car parking spaces, therefore we want to have those spaces reserved in that multi-storey car park close to the hotel. Now, I'm not assured that that may or may not happen. It could happen. And therefore the delegation, four of these, uh, four of the elected reps is signing or the mayor, in their presence, is signing a memorandum of understanding to say that there is a condition on this eight hundred and forty thousand cash in lieu of car parking, that there be reserved parking spaces within the multi-storey car park adjacent to it. The dust has not settled on this particular development as yet. There is still the process to go through with respect to the, the car parking. And by going to China and discussing with the developers, Shandong, which is the investment company, it may lock us in.
Other speakers first, Paul and James.
Paul and James is right. What is the purpose of such a visit unless we clearly understand that, we know we should not go there. However, this city needs infrastructure investment and may be better funded from our private sources. We cannot continue to expect federal or state government grants will be available for all protection projects. We cannot expect Clarence rate payers and residents to continually pork out capital protection. A comment was made, I think, on Friday, Paul will close the Clarence Residence, which another one we would like to criticize. Not all residents understand why all decisions are made. As long as I pin it up to my conscience and a chill's me, that however I voted in any matter, it was with the interest of the city at heart, that I'm satisfied. I guess if winning popularity polls is the reason we're here, then I don't have that political nonsense. What possible reasons could this visit be advantageous? We need to think laterally and consider talking to, say, the Chinese about an arrangement whereby both an investment investor and the city of Clarence can receive a benefit. I know the Kangaroo Bay Development will help Clarence, but further than that can a quick pro quo be achieved so that there are significant public good benefits for the investment, with an investor, we talked about eighteen million dollars for a car park, which at least explore that with an investor about having a commercial office resident along a significant car park. And all of James' comment about him, I agree. This document is our example, be a document outlining what potential mutual benefits might be explored.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. You also commented the likes of Alderman Hughes and indeed Alderman Cusin. Uh, in twenty thirteen, uh, council did support a motion I moved around investigations in existing cities. And we went through a process as a subcommittee and we looked at options and it was sort of deemed, sure, this was talked about in this, in this paper today, but it really showed that most likely with our future at that point in time, China was probably where we should be. If we've done that work, at that time, it was deemed that it wasn't appropriate to press forward. Uh, and, and as we're coming along now, it is seeming that we've got opportunities here. And some of these things don't happen overnight. And, uh, again, I'm a tribute to Doug Lowe and his visionary work many years ago with usual, he took time and nurturing relationship and the payoff, uh, is more than friendship if it was a visit from, you know, the brother of China, it was enormous. And this is not a big cost to, uh, that's all council, but it is potentially for a really big opportunity. And I'd ask you to reflect on, um, what it might mean. Well, yes, existing city relationships potentially, but also two-way trade in this city. The, uh, the likelihood of, of more jobs in our area and tourists around, you know, up the Coal River Valley and how that's taking on in the airport. So it's a small amount of seed investment for moment to take a trip over there. And these relationships often have long-term benefits. I've just highlighted one, and I believe that it's an appropriate thing for this council.
Here, in the seats, I agree with Alderman James about Tommy, but look, we've got to stop by the onerous spot. They've invited us to go, and there's many reasons why we should go, enough to go and accusing, uh, outlined a lot of those. We've got agriculture, we've got agriculture, we've got the Coal River, we've got so many places here that's just climbing out for investment. Until we go and see what they're even offering us for us offering to them, we never can know. We can say, no, let's wait for another year, but we've got to stop by the onerous spot because I'm telling you now, there'll be other places in Tasmania, other places in Australia, other places in the world, we're jumping at this opportunity. We're jumping at this opportunity. And all we're doing is striking a memorandum of understanding. I'm not quite sure what car parking has got to do with a memorandum of understanding. I find it rather strange. But the Chinese are here. We know Kangaroo Bay, but also they're buying up houses and businesses here. We already know that. So we must get in first while I've got a chance and do something with our businesses here, our rate payers in Tasmania. Here's our chance to do something and get, or may I say, we get in pretty early with relationships and I think it would be beneficial to Clarence and Tasmania.
Paul and James, can I say that?
Mayor, I actually see this as a strategic decision. I think that's a really important word. It's, as is said in the report, about actually exploring opportunities and cooperation in relation to a number of areas. And I'd like to touch on a couple of points made by other ordnance. This is about looking at common interests. It's not only about looking at our interests, that's very important, but it's looking at common interests. And Alderman Walker actually described it in terms of a friendship. When you actually meet someone and they become a friend, the way that they become a friend is by actually talking to them, interacting with them, learning about what they are, who they are, what they believe in. And therefore, that's how we actually become friends. And somebody actually used the word trust. That's another important aspect. And those sort of things only occur by face-to-face deliberation. So I actually believe that it's really important and very timely that we actually accept this invitation, to be able to actually discuss all those various aspects and issues that we would like to cover. As far as the memorandum of understanding, I note that in the recommendation, it actually says that if requested, the mayor be authorized to sign a memorandum of understanding. So it may not even get to that stage in the discussion. And it also is important to note that that memorandum would be to explore opportunities for closer cooperation and a longer term relationship between the two cities. So it would be at a very strategic level. It wouldn't be related, well, I certainly would not be expecting it to be related to very technical issues. But with that in mind, I am very happy to support this recommendation.
Yes.
Ah, good. I too support the recommendation and, um, and that is on the terms that we have gone into a business relation, relationship with this company and this country. And within that context, stay up reading the culture here. But I believe that with all interactions between different communities and cultures, that there is, um, a benefit in putting our culture into their culture because they find, they might find it difficult in relating to ours without having to come here and see the concept of it. So within a business arrangement, I believe they're in the benefit in, uh, being in their environment and within their culture and, and feel, having the feel of the way they live, which has to be different to ours. But at the same time, we all have the same basic, um, the understanding and knowledge of where we want to go. I don't have a problem with signing a memorandum of understanding. It has been stated it wouldn't be a binding document, it's purely an expression of interest in a really good solution. So, um, I look forward to getting your input.
Paul and James.
Alderman, I've said really all there is to say about it. It is between, it's memorandum of understanding between the city and their city, nothing to do with the developer, all right. They, they develop a house from that province of China, but it could be anyone else. And I think we've got to look at positives on the side of it. We're dealing with the city, not individuals.
So the motion for the chairman is the recommendation that we accept the invitation. Plus B and B, plus C, all those in favour? Against? Motion's carried. And I'll be writing to Alderman tomorrow to invite expressions of interest to participate in the trip. Paul and Paul, ordinance question time, there's no matters on notice. Are there any questions without, uh, sort of, James? Well, I started at the other side.
You have, most of the time, that's right. Look, uh, two questions. First of all, through you, to Mr Tui, in his capacity as the, um, Community Services Manager of Princess Thailand. Mr Tui, um, the federal cats problem at eighty-five Mockridge Road, would you give us an update, please?
Seeing Mayor, um, the Australian federal cat problem that has been addressed under the, of, um, under the provisions of the, uh, other coal handels that are up there.
Question is in relation to colleagues' trip to New Zealand, so, um, Alderman here.
Paul, tonight, Mr, sometimes I tend to miss these reports.
Well, they haven't been, you know, they haven't.
Well, okay, well, I can't. You got that, you got a good one there.
No, no, you got a good one, you got a good one.
Have you got any questions?
Well done, John.
Uh, if it doesn't stop right now, we have to take more, formal approaches in this exchange. But, but this, Alderman Walker, have you got a question, please? Thank you, Alderman.
I just got two questions. Um, the implementation of star pickets and bumping along Victoria Edmond, on New Year's Eve, if we get, did that result in protecting from gardens? Do you know, had a war with the crack? Uh, yeah, was a problem, wasn't it? As I said, that people were parking on people's gardens. Oh, okay. Okay, bit too thorough with that question. Um, has the matter of stormwater coming up off the bluff, um, along the western side has, um, and this wall at the bottom of Thomas Street has proved inadequate as a result of that runoff? Is, um, with rubber being washed towards the mountain, out like that, in the jet?
Are you, um, definitely a poor constitution?
Thank you, Paul and James.
Topic, Kangaroo Battery, I, I understand that either was or is going to be a meeting with Minister, um.
Pretty, Mr Mayor, yes, I believe, um, so I believe I can, before the meeting finishes, I'll advise you of the date, but I think with Mayor and I've been requested to attend a meeting with, um, Minister Groom in relation to that matter, but I have no understanding as yet as to what the actual, um, meeting is to be about other than about the battery. But I will obviously keep you informed once we know some more detail.
That meeting's on the, uh, I think it's on the twenty-second of March. Yes, twenty-second of March, so. Paul and James?
Yes, sir, sir. It's been talked of late by the minister and the Premier to order here to snake up not assume control over Tass Water. Clarence residents have approximately a hundred and seventy million dollars worth of assets invested. If this is the case, can Clarence residents be assured that the hundred and seventy million dollar investment is significant part, portion thereof, a return for Clarence to be spent for the benefit of Clarence residents? And could you please set assurance from the Minister and the other Premier?
Uh, regretfully, no, we can't be assured. However, I can assure you that Ilgat, on behalf of, uh, Member Councils, is certainly taking it up. Alderman Daps?
We have a section of water in the south of Swanford, on the side of the river road, chain lane through to, I'm assuming. If you jam it on the end, it's a little soggy on the side, it was a one meter, it would be taken up every property.
That, that's my understanding too, but if you could confirm that with a breaking charges. Paul and James?
My question again is, why's it taking so long? I understand we're doing work at Swanford University High School, and I can pass that way of award without giving too much details, and we've got signs up saying, oh, it's a case, and all in half the time, there's not a worker to be seen. Oh, Alderman, Alderman is nodding her head. So what is going on? I just find it so frustrating every morning.
I haven't reached that network, but when we encounter a network, there's no network. Low under the surface, and they are currently relocating that main council.
Main there, I understand people working on it, but most of the time we go, there's nobody working. So why are we stopping, why are we going down to Fordham Towns when there's no one to be seen?
Mr Graham, perhaps, uh, yeah, if you put it, I don't address that issue as well, but, Paul and James, one, right?
Would the jet manager be able to give a briefing in relation to his meeting with the, in relation to Dogwood Creek?
Uh, yes.
Yes, I can. There was actually a written, been written, but I suspect it obviously hasn't gone out to you as yet. It was actually written by Mr. Graham, who attended the meeting with me. But if it hasn't gone out, I'll make sure it goes out tomorrow.
There was a briefing that went out, but it wasn't very definitive.
Okay, well. Okay, well, I'll follow up on that because the one I said was quite definitive in listing a range of actions. It might not have gone in, I'll check further and follow that up. Sure, I understand that Mr. Mayor will follow it up. But we had a meeting with the police where there was three or four actions that recommended. One in relation to us providing them with some detail in respect of land ownership that would enable them to pursue or prosecute, I should say, for trespass, which they currently can't do because they don't have the right to consent from land owners. Secondly, some recommendations and requests from the police to us in regard to barricading of particular access points of the land. Show me out. Resourcing. I just confirm, we will put that in a briefing report because I actually thought it had been done. So I'll check up where that's at.
Item thirteen, post meeting. So the council needs to go in committee now, which forces post-public. As favor? Air unanimously.